Call the order, our meeting for July, or June 3rd, would you please call the roll call?
Yes. Here we have him here. Ken Alexander.
Present.
Steve Schwartz.
Present.
Brad Beaver.
Here.
Rick McKinney.
Present.
Fred Glenn.
Present.
Jeff Hearn. Amy Masalomani.
Hello?
Got to unmute.
You have a quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Start the invocation of pledge with Counselor Brad Beaver.
All right, let's take a, and have a moment of silence and let's remember our men and women in the armed services who are in harm's way this evening. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And we read and approve the minutes for May 6th, may I have a motion?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Want to do the roll call for those two, please?
I don't think we need to since we didn't have, this is a virtual meeting, so I think we're okay.
Okay, for everybody, okay. Do you put them down as NA, or what are you putting them down as?
So, Amy?
Amy just said yes.
Okay.
Jeff, I haven't heard.
Okay, all right, thank you. So, I'm, because I want to know, is it six to one?
There he is.
Seven oh.
Seven oh.
Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you. We open our meeting for public comments, anybody from the public would like to comment?
I got two people for the grant program, do you want to do that now, or during the appropriation?
How about we do it during the update on number G?
Okay, okay, that'll work.
Nobody's here, so closed public comments. Committee officer reports, for myself, just to remind everybody, we have a joint meeting Monday, 10:30 via teams with the commissioners on a few subjects, two of which are the parking garage in Noblesville and additional funding for State Route 37, also veteran service staffing, and I can't remember the other one or two.
So there will be no regular meeting, meeting?
It's all teams.
Teams only?
Well, I talked to Dan, the commissioners are going to be here in Conference Room 1A, so it's open, if anybody wants to come in and be in person, you're free to do that.
Okay.
So. The second item, we have requests to move our budget adoption from September to October at Mike Reuters' request because he believes he needs the extra time for some of the budget revenue numbers. So instead of in September, we'd like to still have our public, or not, still have our public hearing on our meeting on October 7th, and then the actual budget adoption on October 19th, Monday at 8:30 a.m.
But our regular budget hearings will be at the regular time?
Right, in August.
Okay.
Yeah. Any objections to any of that, anybody? That's my consensus, we'll do that, thank you.
Question we had, do you want the not-for-profits at the budget hearings?
I would say yes.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody have a different problem?
I would agree, I think we need to have them.
Third item I had, I know we have a couple items later in the agenda, but I was also going to introduce Chris Dice. Chris, if you want to stand up, just so we see you, everybody, he was the former deputy director and he has been picked by the Parks Board to replace Al. So he's got shoes to fill, but he's has lots of experience, very energetic, and wish you well, Chris.
Thank you, Chris.
And then, Amy, would you like to? All right, thank you. Highway, we did not meet. Finance?
No, no meeting.
Personnel?
We did meet and will address those issues later in our agenda tonight.
Miscellaneous? Great. We have nothing unfinished, nothing tabled, new business, approval of vendor claims, please.
Come on. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? No, that's unanimous, thank you. And we have our annual compliance documents presentation by those companies that have tax abatements, and first up is ACE's Power Marketing.
Good evening, my name is Gerald Frazier, I'm actually with Genovis in Fishers, and I'm here tonight for Dave Klaspel. He actually left town this morning, headed to Raleigh Durham, North Carolina, as he has a grandbaby on the way tomorrow, so I told him I would come and represent the company. I have not done this many times in the past, so I'm not exactly sure what you want. I can tell you that the company is continuing to do very well. They increased revenues from last year of 47.4 million to 49.2. In total, there are 239 employees across the country. They also have locations, I believe they are in Arizona as well. You may know that ACE's Power Marketing is a provider and marketer of power, electric power on the power grid across the nation, and so very high-tech company, very high-tech jobs. 136 jobs have been retained, 48 jobs have been created to date, that's actually eight jobs above what they had committed to, and they have capital investment to date of 8.27 million, and this is actually the, we're sort of at the end, or almost at the tail end of a second round of abatement, so they've been doing very well for about 15, 20 years now. Before I was with Genovis, I was with the Indiana Economic Development Corporation and was working with them from the state side at that time, so I know they've been a longstanding community supporter and member of the Carmel area in Hamilton County, so.
Gerald, let me stop you for a second.
Sure.
Okay, you've done enough.
Okay.
What we basically look at is have a representative here, have the documents filed, and we look at it and make sure that the commitments were met, which they have.
They have.
So I would entertain a motion that we find them in compliance.
I'll make the motion.
They are in compliance?
Yes.
Just, David?
Can we second it? Okay.
All right, who's the, I mean, does this say, it says eligible AV, so how much does this save your company, these abatements, in a year?
In any given year?
Any given year?
They've had real and personal, and I don't have the tax bills with me to tell you what those totals are, but we're, being at the end, it's relatively little amounts now because it's just personal property. I went thinking it was, it was about $9,000 this past year, but again, I don't have that.
It's $9,000 that wouldn't go, that's, that's it, that's the total that, that would be paid to the county is $9,000, okay.
Questions?
I have none.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you. Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you. That passes unanimously. Next, we have Vex Superior Hybrids. Everybody had a chance to read their documents?
Of course.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second the motion.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I just, I'm gonna ask the same question, do we know how much that, this saves you guys in abatements, how much, how much money would go to the county, that's not going to go to the county, it's going to save your company so you can keep investing, do you know that number?
I don't have that.
After we approve that?
I don't have that in front of me here today, it's significant.
Okay, well, it's in the millions, right? Okay, so it'd be in the millions of dollars that, that on an annual basis, that would come to county government but is not, is going to Vex Hybrids because you're investing in our community, correct?
Correct.
Retaining employees and that type of thing, okay.
Abatement's already been approved, we're just finding them in compliance.
I'm asking, I get it, I'm asking a few questions, so, but I, I'm just trying to get that number, so we, it's, it's in the millions at least, right? Is that a number that you can provide to the council, that we can just take a look at that?
I think it's 1.2 million.
Is it?
Yeah, I don't, millions, I, I know it's over a million, but I can't.
Okay, okay, I'm just, I'm just kind of getting, kind of crunching the numbers a little bit, and, and so, and we, and this is something we kind of approve on an annual basis, at least in the, okay? Yes, yes, yes. Oh yeah, I, I'm, I'm fine with it, I'm just trying to paint a picture, because I mean, we got, one thing we're looking at is just a one-time expenditure, and, you know what I mean, there was, there, there was a little bit of, you know, questions on that, let's just say, and this is a one-time thing for a smaller business. Now we're talking about a larger business who I happen to support, I'm going to support this motion, but this is just an annual thing that we do, and it's in the, over a million dollars, and there's, there's usually no questions asked, so I just kind of want to, just, that due diligence, you know what I mean, so that's all I'm doing.
You're free to answer all the questions, but if they're in compliance, you must find them, approve it, there's no option.
Well, I can answer the questions they can.
Yes, their tax abatement's been approved, though.
Okay, thank you.
I just had one question, and I apologize, it's not about compliance or not, I was just concerned about the fire you guys had, have you had a chance to rebuild, and? All back in?
Regarding the fire, we were.
Awesome. Okay, good.
Ready for fall.
Good.
Thank you. I didn't mean to get us off track, I was just curious to make sure they're up and going.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, son.
We should continue success, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Unanimous.
Thanks, Gerald.
Thank you.
As have you.
Is, I'm just curious, we have Amy visually, but Jeff is only audio. He can hear us okay, or do we know? I haven't heard anything.
Yep, I can, I can hear you.
Okay, great, thanks, Jeff, thank you. Third item, ordinate CC 0603 2020-A, ordinance transferring funds from the general fund to the rainy day fund. What we had discussed, I think, last month, recommendation from Mike Reuters, 4,334,282.
I'll make the motion.
Second, I think.
Amy, second, thank you. Any discussion?
None.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Nope, that's unanimous, thank you. Next, resolution, CC 0603 2020-01, a resolution concerning the purchase of real estate for 191st Street Grassy Branch Intersection Project.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 That passes unanimously. Then we have grant fund appropriations, and these are just simply noted, right, Robin?
Yes.
Fund 8152, fiscal year 2019, emergency management. What do you stand for, grant? Anybody know? Personnel?
Yes.
106,55720. Fund 8221, federal highway administration reimbursement grant, 241,247.79 cents. Fund 103620-dot-106 CARES Act Airport Grant.
That, that CARES, just so you guys know, the CARES grant was money that come from the federal government to help support the airport that we own in Boone County. Oh, part of that money to offset the operator's rent for a few months.
157,000.
And they got that from the, they actually got that from the CARES Act? Interesting.
Most, a lot of, almost airports got something.
Yeah.
That was part of it.
They didn't even apply for it, they just got granted to them.
That's interesting.
Yeah.
And item G, Hamilton County Stabilization Fund for Small Business Grant Update. So moved?
I'm sorry, Rick, my, my fault, we, we do need a motion.
I apologize, so.
A motion.
Can we?
Motion.
Motion.
I'll second.
Seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Unanimous. What would you like to tell us, Fred?
Oh, we got Todd Clevenger here.
Oh, right.
I was going to introduce myself, but.
Okay, go ahead.
Well, but I did, I did impersonate you last week at the, at the commissioners' meeting, so for those of you whom I have not met personally yet, I am Todd Clevenger, I'm the grant administrator for the county, I am also the Otter's Office appointee to the Hamilton County Stabilization Fund for Small Businesses Selection Committee. And I'm here to give you an update on the program, where it is, and hopefully answer any questions that you might have. So, the selection committee, when we got together, we, we put together funding criteria, two major criteria, and then a couple weeks later, the commissioners helped us out and added a few more. So, the, the, the main ones, to be awarded funding out of this grant, you had, your business had to be forced to close due to the pandemic, and you didn't receive funding from any other source. You had to complete all the paperwork and supplies for all the documents that were requested. Commissioners, they wanted businesses to be located within certain Hamilton County priority areas, unincorporated areas in the northern part of the county, and then no duplication of payment from within Hamilton County, so Noblesville, Fishers, Cicero, they all have their own business loan or grant programs, and so if a business received money from one of those, they didn't qualify for ours. What we did is, we had, we got together and we talked about it, and we had two levels, two tiers of criteria, the second level was everything the same, only those organizations that did receive funding, oh, it didn't disqualify a business if you got federal or state funding, it just dropped you down on the priority list. But then they had to meet all the other rec, all the other criteria as well. So that was the criteria in order to get funding, so throughout the process, we've had 210, and, and I believe we all, you all have this stuff, and I'll, but I'll go through it, but 210 total applications came through. 80 applications didn't qualify because they were not forced to close. 58 applicants received funding from another source, federal or state. Nine applicants received funding from a city or town program, thus they don't qualify for ours. 42 applicants were not forced to close, and they also received funding from other sources. Two applicants fit all the criteria to receive funding, but they didn't provide all the documents necessary after numerous attempts to get them to provide the documentation. Phone calls, emails from both Councilman Glenn and I, and we just couldn't get it. 52 applicants fit all the required criteria to receive funding. Three applicants fit 75% of the criteria, and this, these percentages are important as we get to the next part. 46 applicants fit 50% of the funding criteria, in a total, 101 Hamilton County businesses are going to receive funding from this program. So the different tiers that we, the selection committee set up, tier one was 100%, you, you met all the criteria, 100% of the, everything, you, you, you were forced to close, you didn't receive funding, you gave us all the documents, checked to see if you were in the priority areas, only four were, and you didn't get any money from cities or towns programs. Second funding level was you were forced to close, but you received state or federal funding, and what we, what we discussed and talked about at the criteria, so the first tier, the ones that met at 100%, fund their requests at 100%. Second tier, if they met 50% of the criteria, fund them at 50%. 75% of the criteria, fund them at 75%. I don't, you know, if you want me to, you know, you have the breakdowns, and we had every city and town that you can think of, every walk of life, you know, business-wise, everything from small retail shops to Black Hawk Winery, and everything in between. Total funding for the program, if you take tier one, tier two, 743,205. And I'll answer any questions you have, that's, that's about all the data I have for you.
I have no question. I've, I've got a couple questions, I, I went through and did a lot of the analysis, and, and it looked as if it was a pretty, when you look at the different municipalities there, so, a, a big drop in, in some areas that didn't go, how did you guys advertise for this with the different communities and the businesses?
So, we put it on our website, we also sent it out to all the media channels that we normally, and I believe.
Yeah, it went, it, it was in the, the current newspapers it was on, and it was all the TV stations covered, the Star did not, and IBJ picked it up after we were done with it, after the commissioners made their final vote, then the IBJ picked it up, so.
Trustees and city councils.
And trustees and city councils were, were hitting that too, so, and then, but, but the Carmel took it a step further, and they were putting it on their website, on their, you know, homepage there, and they were, they were kind of letting a lot of businesses know, and we, we did what we could though, through Tammy Sandru, I think did a really good job with this, but she, she pushed it out to all the media outlets, and, you know, the one.
And the second question I have is, I, some of these I saw were listed with Hamilton County as their location, was it, or Indianapolis, Hamilton County, is that to say it's, it's outside of the incorporated area, or?
So if there was an address that said Indianapolis, what we did is we, we went up to our mapping department, and we made sure that the address was in Hamilton County, and so they verified it.
Okay.
But that's how it came in on the application, so that's how we had it listed.
Understood, I appreciate that.
Anybody else?
My, my only.
My only disagreement is that the prioritization criteria wasn't anything we talked about. It was simply if they didn't receive government funding, they would get the money. And there was nothing about a 50, 75%, anything like that.
The... Go ahead. Yeah, the 50%. We did...in the application, one of the lines was preference will be given to businesses that have received no other funding. But it wasn't a disqualifier. You know, one of the disqualifiers was if you weren't forced to close. That was an automatic disqualifier. So there was some that totally disqualified you. But on the one where they received other government funding, we didn't totally disqualify them. So that's kind of why we had to kind of categorize them like that, because that's in the application. We gave what...we did say we would give priority over one over the other based on other government funding. And locally, we...if they received anything locally, we pulled them out. I know that was mentioned here in the commissioners or the council meeting, but the commissioners explicitly mentioned that as well. So they didn't want us overlapping with any local. So to get the commissioners' approval, we had to make sure we ran through Fishers, Noblesville list. And I believe somebody on council mentioned that as well. So they didn't want any local overlap. Thank you.
I just want to say I appreciate the effort that Todd and Fred had put in on this, particularly when I... The overall premise, I'm not sure I'm in agreement with the total dollar amount, but I appreciate the effort that you guys have put into making sure that this money went to eligible businesses rather than just kind of throw it out front door and see where it blows off to. I know you put some work into it, and I appreciate that.
Yeah, I mean, short of auditing their books, we did everything we could possibly do from here to make sure that, you know, they were legitimate businesses. Financials. We looked at their financial statements. We did all that stuff. Went online and made sure that they were registered. Or if, you know, they're sole proprietor, they still...if they had an active status. So but to put a face to all this, what I'd like to do is introduce Michelle Slaughterbeck, who is the owner of Bombshell Hair Company.
Are you saying she's better looking than you?
Did that come out of my mouth? Because I don't think it... In the state, I educated her to say that, but I think that's pretty...
It's pretty obvious.
I'd like to have her talk about what the program means to her.
First of all, I'd like to thank the Hamilton County Council and the commissioners for making the Small Business Stabilization Fund possible. I'm here because the business, my business, the Bombshell Hair Company, is one of the businesses considered...being considered for the grant. My business is unique in comparison to many other businesses, because within my business is 12 other businesses. So...which are independent stylists, and I'm one of them. We just opened our doors in September. So as you can imagine, because of us being forced to shut down, and we were not able...the stylists were not able to pay their rent. There's quite a bit of debt. So with this fund, this will help with operating expenses, and I'm able to forgive those stylists, many of which are single moms, to help them and cover those expenses. And I just want to say thank you for supporting small businesses like mine, and thank you for considering me.
Thank you, Michelle. With Michelle, I, you know, just want to say, I talked to Councilman Alexander last. He wanted somebody here to testify. That was kind of his thing. I didn't think of that. I mean, he did. So I went and threw the list, and I was like, wait a minute. I know Jason, so obviously this was an easy one. I called her up. But this is an example of what we did this for. These are businesses that are unique to Hamilton County. They're forced to close. Headquarters here. Employees are here and everything. So that's...she was a perfect example of that. And did not receive...wasn't able to receive any federal funding at all. So...
If I could add to that, Fred, I'd say that this is...I think this is an amazing program, and we should be really proud of being able to put this out. There's so many people that would fall through the cracks. And it's not necessarily the businesses and everything else, but the...it's difficult to find employees for some of these positions in our county. It's expensive to live here. It's expensive to drive here. We don't have the mass transit to promote to get here. We know that we have a workforce development issue that we're trying to push out and doing, I think, an amazing job of getting that. But this is a...this could be catastrophic to a lot of businesses that hire minimum wage to low-wage earners that, you know, are going to really struggle. So this is...I'm really excited to see this opportunity, and I think this...I really applaud you, Fred, for taking this and pushing this through.
Thanks. Yeah, we also...there was an IBJ article, which, interestingly enough, they just put it out last week, and it talked about what happened with federal funding. And those federal dollars, they said 70% of them went to businesses that weren't even...weren't even intended for the program. So that's why I'm proud of the way we handled that. And Todd did a great job. I mean, you talk about the organization and why this is lined up. That was all Todd. He did a really good job. But we made sure that this went to people here. So I mean, we...you know, not like the federal government where corporations were getting it that it wasn't intended for. Everybody that you see on this list was the type of business that was intended, and they were forced to close, taken out of the free market. This wasn't...no choice of theirs, and all of them are unique to our county. So...
Mr. President?
Yes.
I would also just like to share the accolades with Tom and...I'm sorry, Todd and Fred and Mark, the group on the committee that made this work in such an efficient manner. And I feel as though, I mean, to have this level of detail, I'm just thankful to all of your hard work. So Fred, thank you again for spearheading this.
Yeah, and Commissioner Brandt and Todd, thank you. Yeah, definitely. You're welcome. Thanks.
And I'd like to just jump in since we're recognizing...you know, I'm very impressed. You know, you contacted me almost six, eight weeks ago on this, and I knew then you were going to spend a lot of time with her, Fred. And I really congratulate you. Your professionalism was A1, out of the park, and your proactive gestures to get these businesses back on track. Kudos. So thank you very much for all your efforts and the rest of the team that put this together. So thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Now we will open our public hearing concerning additional appropriations. One is the orders, amendment, and acceptance of some job descriptions for her staff. So moved.
Second.
Question? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Would you like to speak?
No. You guys are talking while I'm sitting down.
Robin, sit down.
Yeah.
We had a discussion today, Robin and Dawn and I, that she thought number five should go before number two. We arranged that. So court administration, 144 amendment, court commissioner, job description, and additional requests for eighty-one thousand, one eighty-seven forty-nine. Ali and Judge Najjar walking up.
You have to motion for this? I motion to approve and discuss.
Second.
Second.
So the state approved a magistrate, and you want to hire a commissioner a year ahead of time?
That's correct. Because the...
You got a spot to put him?
Yes. Because the request for the magistrate was out of the General Assembly's budget cycle. It doesn't become effective until July of 2021. And so we would go that whole period without the relief that we really needed. So what we're asking is that a commissioner, who can essentially do the same things as a magistrate, be approved to serve until one July, 2021, at which time that commissioner's position will go away, and it will be replaced by the magistrate, which is a state-funded position. And so we're also asking for the court reporter to support that commissioner. And then on July 1st, 21, when the magistrate takes office, that same court commissioner will continue forward with the new magistrate that's already been approved by the General Assembly. And I would ask you to note that we're also...we haven't asked for it yet, but we're also asking for your approval for us to go ahead and ask for another judge and another court, which would be Superior Court Number Seven. Or we may also ask that all of our courts be renamed as circuit courts, in which case it would become Circuit Court Number Eight. But that doesn't change anything other than nomenclature.
You're not asking for the court tonight, are you?
We are not asking for that tonight.
Just verbally, you wanted to...
We're just verbally asking, because we'll have to do the paperwork and go to the committee on courts and go through that whole spiel in this session of the General Assembly to get that court approved. But we would be asking for you to sign a resolution, as we would be asking the commissioners and the prosecutor and the bar association to sign a resolution saying that you're in favor of our doing that.
Do that in July?
We would probably start that in July or August, the paperwork for that. And the only thing I would add to all of that is that, as you are all well aware, the current situation with coronavirus has just exacerbated things. The courts are not going to be able to conduct jury trials until August the 15th. And the backlog of jury trials has become somewhat horrendous. Judge Najjar and Judge Brown are here, and I'm sure they can comment on the fact that all of our courts have been doing teleconferencing, video hearings to the greatest extents possible to try and get rid of some of these things. But in the case of criminal trials, civil trials, bench trials, those can't...those could not be accomplished by video teleconferencing. Cases are continuing to be filed in the interim. And so our backlog of cases is sort of building up and about to break the dam here. So I would...and even before all of that, our numbers justified are asking for another court and another judge. So with that, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. Judge Najjar, Judge Brown are here. I'm not sure if I have some other judges on Zoom or Team or whatever we're using here today, but I would imagine some of them are also there. So if you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer those.
Tonight is simply just the commissioner request.
Tonight is just simply for the commissioner.
And that's the $80,000?
And I think the $17,740 is for benefits for that position in the court reporter.
The first one we're doing is number five.
So it's closer to $100,000. And that gets us through to 2021.
July 1st, 2021, at which time the new commissioner would come on board...or I'm sorry, the new magistrate would come on board, and the magistrate is a state-funded position. So that would take the commissioner away. The commissioner position would go away then.
Sam? I understand.
Any other questions?
I have none.
All in favor? This is number five.
Aye.
Aye.
Passes unanimously. We have number two, which is the $17,000...
Motion to approve?
Second.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That passes unanimously.
I would say I'll let you know, when you come back and you want us to sign papers requesting another court, have a generalized idea of what the financial impact's going to be to us. I mean, buildings, furniture, everything.
Well, not on with that. I would...to add to that, understanding like the overtime and other things that we pay because we are...we're overworking longer days, there's a savings there by not having to do that by having this in. So you obviously have some savings on that end to the expenses. It's, you know, getting that business plan that makes it a reasonable request.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Number three. We have an additional $750,000. That was the base amount. Stay with this or just go with the balance of what's needed to fund?
Well, that...
This was advertised, though, wasn't it?
Yeah, it was advertised, yeah.
So what's the corrected amount?
You could go with over... Right, exactly. 488, 488?
488, 205.
Okay, so a motion for 488, 205.
Second.
Can I ask one quick question, just from a...real quick on the calculation perspective? And there was an...it looked as though on the second tier, as you would have called it, application ID 51, I would just want to make sure that the calculation was conducted accurately. Because to me, it looks like instead of a 75% calculation, it shows a 25% calculation.
Okay.
Which is fine. It's just that's a difference of, you know... I just want to make sure that that was brought to somebody's attention. That's the only calculation concern I came across.
That was...yeah, and that's one of them, yeah. Yeah, it's one, two, three, because they were in the...looks like the...
All the others were accurately. I just...that one I want to make sure is documented.
Okay. We...that's something we can look into. Yeah. That was the one he did. Yeah.
We'll remember to check his math.
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed.
Jeff, anybody hear what Jeff said? Brad's opposed, I'm opposed, so it passes five to two. Have the additional $4 million for the inter-fund transfer to Rainy Day.
So moved. So we...I'm sorry. We did get special distribution, Robin? That's what that is?
Yes.
Good, good. Glad that we got it in our hands.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Passes unanimously. Number six, Buildings and Grounds Reduction, $71,719.
Steve called me about this. This is the kickback on the sewer. So I'll make that motion.
Second.
Second by Ken. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Unanimously, thank you. ISS Additional, $4,0525 rental laptops for employees to work from home.
So moved.
And...
Second.
$1,000 for employees. Second? Sorry.
I didn't. Amy?
Amy.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That passes unanimously. Emergency Management Additional, $38,582 for overtime.
Are we getting reimbursed for this?
Motion?
Second.
On motion.
Sorry. Well, good evening. Part of this, yes, is in response to the COVID...for the COVID response. This is day 54 of the EOC activation. The COVID expenses are eligible for 75% reimbursement from FEMA. The 25% for our department, that is actually eligible for reimbursement or eligible to be matched by our volunteer hours, which have donated over $30,000 to be able to match that offset of that 25%. We're also looking at what else can we utilize the CARES Act for, for the aspects that are eligible for the COVID response. And we continue that overall process for the COVID, you know, looking at, obviously very closely, the patients under investigation, hospitalizations, and those sorts of things. We've processed to date over 225 different requests for logistical support. And then we've also received a number of shipments from the state and feds. And some of that requires us to give it to hospitals or to fire departments, those sorts of things. So we have to figure out where those...that goes. It's a little bit more complex than just receiving it. So in the short answer, yes, those things that are eligible for the COVID would be covered or are eligible for the FEMA reimbursement for emergency protective measures.
So if you were going to throw a percentage on there, what do you think it would be? Of your requests, what do you think we will get reimbursed?
I would feel like we would get reimbursed probably at least 60% of that.
Okay.
That for everything that...this one or all costs to date?
That's all costs to...no, for all costs to date, I would...I believe that we will be... Most of that would be probably 95% eligible for reimbursement. And then the great thing, and I need to send out an update to the council, but when we...the last time we ran those numbers and we sent out what we had actually incurred from a department level, and then that 25% match, we were almost even, thanks to the volunteer hours that FEMA allows us to count towards the reimbursement.
Sam?
This is all being administered by the state and then passed on to you? Is that from the federal to the state to you? Is that how it works?
It is, but we work very closely or directly with FEMA. And then we also work with the state's group that actually helps us manage that. They've got a lot of experience. And FEMA does have a new system that this is the first disaster we're using it for. Instead of us collecting all the data from all the different municipalities, that coming to the county, and then us... to the county, and then us having to cut checks and send that out to the municipalities, the municipalities actually are the grant recipients of that, so that they're putting in their own information, and then that money goes directly to them. So no longer are we having to do all of that work on their behalf.
Not having to, we're bypassing the state and it's coming directly to us?
We are still working with the state, but it all is eligible...
But the money is bypassing them.
Yes.
Okay, great.
And do you mind with your motion if we add the transfer of $14,88,000 as well?
I'll amend my motion to include that.
I'll amend my second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Passes unanimously. Sheriff, 144 amendment.
Thank you.
Thank you, Shane.
Thanks, Shane.
For specialty pay for deputy, you have a motion?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Second by Amy. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Passes unanimously, thank you. Fund, HC, PBC, leased rental bonds, $26,000.
This is, this is mainly a bookkeeping transfer. This money is already there, but it didn't get appropriated in last year's budget, so they found it and moving it into the correct place. It has to do with the airport.
So moved.
Second. Favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously, thank you. Give me a cap development reduction, $990,000. Back in May.
So moved.
Second.
Favor?
Aye.
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 Fund 1176, motor vehicle highway, $50,000 for drain repair, and this is passed by the surveyor's office.
Yes, this is a bill that they send to the highway department.
Somehow that don't seem right.
It doesn't.
No, but...
We're going to pay it.
That's the...
Do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
And I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously, thank you. I know, that is, it really convoluted. Fund 1219, park and recreation, requesting $4,466.44, and it's a 144 amendment and revised job descriptions. This is for COVID-19 supplies.
Mr. President, that amount for the additional is actually $2,233.
Motion to approve of the adjustment.
Sorry, was that Amy or Jeff?
Amy.
And then the 144 are the new position, Chris and the deputy. All in favor?
We need a second.
I'll second the motion.
I thought Amy seconded it.
No, she made it, sorry.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Passes unanimously, thank you. And non-reverting computer maintenance, $254,100.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And this is for phone licensing, so that passes unanimously. Digital orthophotography, $25,000. Want a motion?
I'll make a motion. I'll second it.
Aye.
Passes unanimously. And highway special, requesting $10,000 for a typical signal equipment malfunction.
Got to fix stoplights.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Passes unanimously, thank you. Last, pre-trial supervision grant, $234,095. Appropriating new grants from July 1 of 2020 to June 30 of 2021.
So moved.
That Amy motion?
Yes.
Second.
Steve, second, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Now, we will close the one, or close the public hearing on appropriations, and now we have announcements. Sheriff?
I don't have anything, thank you.
I just want to take another minute to recognize another one of our council members, Amy. Thank you for all your hard work in the workforce development project and the job fair. I know it's taken a lot of time. And Commissioner as well, Commissioner Herbrant, thank you for all your hard work, and the rest of your committee. It's not gone unnoticed, so thank you guys very much.
Thank you very much, thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
That's all I have.
Counsel attorney? Nothing, sir. Auditor?
Yeah, I just want to, kudos to Lee Graham and my staff. Settlement will be going out tomorrow, and so that's a good thing. And I do want to thank Todd Clevenger for graciously accepting the challenge for the stabilization fund. Not that he had any choice, but I appreciate it.
All right. I have a document, just routine annual from Carmel Redevelopment Commission announcing that they will leave all of their TIF money.
Of course we do.
And nothing will be excess.
Yeah, of course.
So Robin, I'll pass that on to you. And anything else before we adjourn? We're adjourned, thank you.
Thank you.